And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
And to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Excuse me, the office of North Beach Town Council.
That's give the office of more each month.
According to the constitution and laws of this state.
According to the constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
We'll get an official one next week.
Yes. Oh, yes, ma'am. Right, he's walking in. All right.
Perfect. It's just in time.
For depiction. We had to get us good notes in this thing.
Can I get her behind? Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely.
I can get you behind there so I can get her over again.
Yep.
Maybe we should use scissors.
No, it doesn't. Sharp knives in here not necessarily get to have around.
Kevin cut it for me on his new fancy cutter and it's a little thin, so I'll squeeze it in for the night.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. One, three, one, two, three. And the pretty one will happen next week.
Councilor Dotson is your chairman.
A little bit. That's Kevin from my fancy bank.
That's always a great part of the meeting piece. All right. Let's move right into. We're gonna get a presentation for Calvert County Soil Conservation on the North Beach Shoreline Protection Project, which I'm extremely excited. Everything I've read. Sounds good to me. I'm just ready to go. For any guy, I think it's gonna be huge, huge, huge to the town when it comes to issues we have, as you know. Between the rain and the tidal, we're always battling something. I just think this is really gonna help us in the area that we're starting with. There's more to come, but right now this is the great start. Thanks, Mike. We have, um, Mayor and Councilor, remember, a while, maybe. I'm gonna spend almost a year, year and a half ago, that the soil conservation team did this very presentational. Uh, concepts that they had that were perfectly. The area from Seventh Street down to Hatchess Corner, we call. And they're here now, they started on that design, but they wanted to give a council update, um, give you all the facts that they have so far. They've been out there doing some field work, they have some ideas, great ideas. And as you know, they're very energetic, so at this point I'll let them take their presentation presentation last time, I expect no less. And we have Mr. Jason Levitt. And he's just manager of Calvert Soil Conservation. I'll let him introduce his team, but. Thank you, Donnie. I didn't want to have that many council. As Donnie says, my husband makes a lot of it on the district manager at Calvert Soil Conservation District. And on behalf of the district, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to work with the town on an exciting project such as this. This evening, we're basically gonna give a little presentation. And then we're gonna open it up to hopefully have a little bit of back and forth discussion to try to figure out what you like. If there are things that you like more than others, basically to ensure that the project is moving forward in a manner that's separate into the town. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Ryan St. Lorette, who's the Assistant District Manager at Calvert Soil Conservation District. And Mr. John Pies from Coast Watch and General. Thank you.
Can I stop you one second? Mickey, I need you. I'm technically challenged. So when I put it up there and I do hit from beginning.
Okay.
It goes by.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
That's.
New system coming soon.
Yeah, that's.
It's gonna be Kevin, right?
Yeah.
Even many other trained people. But can the audience see it?
So you first have to share it.
Thank you for your patience. It's not my wheelhouse. You're good to go.
How much do we need to stand in the mic?
Um, you can, you can take it off if you wanna.
Take it off.
Yeah.
All right, so. Just a brief overview. Michelle, you weren't here for the, for most of these talks. What we're having experiencing here is. This section of boardwalk, this north deficient here. Experiences really heavy wave action and in our region of the bay, it comes along with land driven waves. Which also brings a big storm surge. We get high tide and big waves that are smashing up against the shoreline here. And there's multiple homes, this is their own access. Uh, to that property. So waves splashing up onto the second floors, you know, pretty unacceptable. There's an existing revetment out there right now. Uh, but that just starts to splash up on the plate, the people. And it's damaging to the, uh, the boardwalk too. They've had to repair it multiple times at this point. And further away, there's a gravity that sewer pipe there. So heading this in the air, this is just a really. Important area that we, that we have to provide stabilization on this combine. And right now, it's eroded, eroding out underneath the. Underneath the boardwalk and on the kind of retaining wall, planters that are planted there. Uh, so Donnie came to us and. We wanted to put in breakwater structures and I was actually looking for an opportunity to try nature based design with oyster reefs combined with breakwater structures. Um, and that's what we're here to present on tonight. Uh, I met John a while back. He isn't, he has been, he spent a career with NOAA, EPA and Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, doing a lot of shoreline work and then went to a private company. About two thousand and three, if I'm impressed. And, uh, he's been practicing in a sole, as of originally. A manager, then he got into his sole practice and, uh. We were happy to run across him. He has, uh, he's been using some innovative reuse of recycled concrete. From demolition on bridges and buildings and stuff like that. So. Go ahead and on the agenda tonight.
Is it moving? Oh, you know, let me see that. Yeah. Another technical difficulty.
Perfect.
There you go. Sorry.
I wanted to present the breakwater design concepts to you all. Review some of the different, the different options that we've come up with. And, uh, with some different materials and then also discuss some of the ecological, environmental community benefits that all those designs will provide for us. All right. So, so the context of, uh, like I mentioned, we have online on ongoing shoreline erosion, that's pretty common. On the midst of the bay in Calvert County and especially in North Beach, that's why most of it's hardened already. But what's interesting about using recycled concrete is upsets me are sustainability goals. It's less carbon heavy. Uh, you don't have to quarry it, it already exists. So all the manufacturing for the concrete is already done. Now it's just demolition and then really uniquely, instead of bringing that material onto land and going to a landfill. We can put it back into the water for ecosystem services and build up breakwaters and attach waste to see that. Uh, they also enhance some SAV. And like I said, it's nature based design. Our goal was to mimic a natural. But balance the immediate protection that's required in this specific site really because of the member structure that's at risk. Uh, we'll discuss some of the cost effectiveness for the taxpayers and, um, I'd like to bring up the Caesar Report. The Caesar Report. Is a comprehensive evaluation of system restoration. That was conducted by Stat, standing for the Scientific Technical Advisor Committee. Um, if you're in the field, you know that there's only like three main contributors. Two, like three committees that have a lot of big say in the overall Chesapeake Bay program. Like there's three, you know, the five different states. The entire watershed and Stack is one of the important ones. They're the only scientific. Put this report together. What they found is that we don't have enough non-point source solutions. Being largely improved, improved the water quality that we thought we would about twenty years ago. Um, the second finding is that they don't know if or when. And the certain fourth finding is that. We acknowledging that we need to be learning while doing and practicing adaptive management and trying new things. And, uh, in taking a system restoration. Uh, beyond that, it's actually Governor Moore's objective to step upon nearshore habitat restoration. And oyster reefs are exactly that. They are the city double. Um, coincidentally too, DNR had just finished up their large scale restoration on the five tributaries. In Maryland as part of the, the WIP program. That ended this year and people have kind of been like, where are we going next? Well, Heron Bay was selected as one of the three next large scale restoration sites. In Maryland. So we're hoping that we can partner. We have good relationships with people at DNR and, uh, MBE. And we're hoping to leverage that and to, and use. Their goals to help us meet our goals also. And you guys are in the Heron Bay Sanctuary. They've worked out really well. Uh, to talk a little bit more about the breakwater function and design considerations, I'm gonna hand it off to John as our engineer and brands of the operation.
Oh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present what we. We hope, I think, will be a. Cost effective and environmentally friendly solution to, to your problem here. Uh, just by way, a little bit further background, when me, I got started into this. I'm a civil engineer that focused for over thirty years in coastal engineering. How to flooding erosion for development. Uh, it came to me, I guess about seven years ago. I joined forces with another guy, civil engineer out of Charleston, South Carolina, especially with demoing bridges. And he came to me, uh, we were working on a joint project and he said. You know, John, there's this material, some of this stuff is really high quality stuff. Putting it in landfills. What do you think we can do with? I said, well, we could reprocess it. We have to go through a certification program, but I think there's potential here. Well, that led from one thing to another. And suffice it to say, now it's coming out of the woodwork in terms of cost reduction and what we can do with the material. So in this case, we're looking at the utilization of recycled material, recycled concrete. With development and construction of a breakwater for shoreline erosion purposes. Um, what's kind of unique here. In this kind of application. We're gonna be using panels. And these are gonna be road weight panels. From, originally we thought we'd get it and we still very well might get it from the Francis Ducky Bridge. But we also have three or four other projects now that were actively under contract to utilize the same type of material that we would get. The key bridge to support this project. But essentially what we're doing is we're taking road panels. These are eight foot long, sixteen, or eighteen, eight, eight, eight feet wide. Sixteen feet long and eight inches thick. And we can cut those. The big thing here is we're just not demoing and taking the material. We do it for the delivery, the processing. Uh. Series of events where we first test the material to make sure it meets engineering standards. Secondly, we use ASDM, which is the Recognized National Methodology for Testing Materials. Based on civil engineering, uh, second. And then we also ensure that the material is environmentally friendly. And in fact, in this case, it's gonna be an environmental enhancement in how we're utilizing it. In combination with ocean, potential ocean habits of development. So in this case, we're taking and we're stripping. The sections such that we can use them to build a breakwater. And what we're essentially doing is layering it. In such a fashion that we will create a breakwater that has porosity associated with it. So then. And enhances its habitat value for waste restoration, but as well provides for not only wave repenetration, which is the. Major problem you have here. Unfortunately, because of the situation, the storm surge, especially during high tide conditions. We can't really prevent the flooding, that elevation aspect. But I'm observing what the problem you have here. Is that once that water comes, that wave comes and breaks under the boardwalk. The spray comes up and that spray is really detrimental impact on the various residences along that boardwalk. So what we want to do here is attenuate that wave energy. So that's the design that we're utilizing here. And this type of breakwater system is meant to attenuate that wave and energy associated with that. So the destructive nature of any erosion. That understanding has some infrastructure, some surge on underneath that boardwalk. That, you know, are periodically endangered by, you know, continually erosion underneath the boardwalk. So the primary, you know, application here obviously is a breakwater to continue to delay wave energy. And provide for more stable environment. In this law, uh. The effect of a breakwater system, especially in this type of environment. Where you have a lot of sand offshore, we're designing it in such a fashion that will actually accumulate. Sand behind a breakwater. And that's kind of instrumental longer term, as why I mentioned. Or further habitat advancement, where we can actually utilize that area. To plan SAVs and tidal wetland areas that are also a very significant habitat enhancement. It's uplifted ecosystem benefits as we call them trade. Uh, also with this type of design. Uh, sea turtles, we understand, huge issue. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, sea turtles too. But this design will allow for ingress and egress. So that's a very significant problem here. Uh, or a consideration, I should say. So, um. We are actually going to have three sections. That would, that would be approximately a hundred and twelve feet long. It'll be about six and a half feet high. Uh, it'll be above the mean high water level. We'll talk about aspects of how we can. Address the, the, the part that will be visible. It'll be about two and a half feet above mean low water. So it'll be visible during low tide. But you're gonna see a platform. It's gonna be a platform on the top. It'll be flat. Just like you see in a river. You'll see a, a plateau on the top. Which will be a foot long, sixteen foot wide. And it's interesting, but it'll extend the whole length. Of a hundred and twenty feet. So we have three units like, like the picture, picture here. And they're, they're, the way they're aligned. Is to provide for. And you'll see, um, the inlets. Right behind the first one and also on the side of the other two more landward units that will provide for flushing. So. It's very important that in the design that would provide for a situation where we tend, we. Support the continued tidal flushing because we don't want to develop any kind of stagnation water areas. So that's the purpose of why you see those openings there. The other thing is the way this is graded. The slope of this is very conducive to some of the habitat enhancements, uh, enhancements that that line will talk about. So I think that, and that show is even efficient design. And the objectives of trying to get there.
One thing I would add to the layout is that they're angled, if you notice, a little bit, a little bit angled. And that's because we want to address, the really big issues is when we get a northeast wind, that's, we got a Florida mile fetched to the northeast and the eight mile fetched to the southeast. And they're angled to not allow. Waves to just come straight through. That's why we actually have the third one of them there. So we'll be essentially breaking all of the waves before they reach that shoreline. So by the time they get to the revetment, it'll be a minor splash rather than a riverside of waves breaking. Um, additionally, there, there's a whole crew out there observing during the orshu grab mating season and there's a whole non-office essentially set up. To remove the orshu grabs from the riprap that's out there from the, from the jetty that's coming out and then the revetment behind. But the concrete slabs, uh, below the water, they don't need that. They don't get stuck on flat slabs. So that's another benefit of that being. Above the water. But one other thing I wanted to mention, with this design utilization of these panels. That reduces the likelihood of subsidence. When you have a stone riprap or a breakwater. The pressure and the bearing capacity is a lot greater because you don't distribute that load over a flat surface. You're distributing that load in concentrated corners for the stone, for the riprap, for the armor stuff, you know, interfaces for the sediment. So this, this is a highly stable structure. Given the fact that we're distributing that load over such a broad wide area. So we certainly see in that sinkage that there's existing rock on the north end this experience. Uh, down here is the profile of it. You can see at the top of the breakwater structure is a little bit higher than the revetment that's out there right now. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be breaking those waves. Um, this is also here. Blue line represents mean high water, red line represents the water. Um, there's a few different cost options. So if we're only going for second concrete. There's, the benefit is that it's the lowest cost, sustainable reuse and it's locally available. Even if it's not from the bridges, they're taking down concrete buildings all the time. Easy to just move them out here and put them in the water if they meet all the standard protocols that John has developed. Uh, reduce carbon footprint, waste reduction, potential carbon credits for the cap, for the town, if you guys are interested in that. Uh, but some of the concerns is the variability and durability and appearance. Um, concrete is not as strong as rock, although it is sufficient for what we're gonna be applying to them. Uh, but the appearance, it's gonna be, it's recycled concrete. Enough said about that. Um, then the stone. Stone only, we've seen how that works. We, we, we. I'm a little hesitant to even recommend that as an option because we see some great sinkage in other places and to attenuate that, we really, you have to put in almost. Triple the amount of material. That you would if you're to account for the sinkage. So the weight alone from the riprap, I mean, kind of disways meat from it. Um, but it does match the existing town aesthetics. So it won't look different than any other structure that we have out there except for the wood ball pits. Um, the local sources are Haverty Grace and Norfolk, so they're hauling them very far. And they're heavily on, uh, on the environment, uh, from the core in compacts and the carbon footprint that they produce because you have to work, you have to break it up. The third option is the combination of recycled concrete below the water. And then on the top, on top of that, from mean low water and above, where you actually see on a. Pretty regular basis would be the just stone, just riprap that we see out there, large two, two thousand pound chunks of rock. Um, imagine the benefits here is it matches the existing aesthetics, but it balances the ecosystem services where. Not to worry about the worship grabs getting stuck under there anymore if you have recycled concrete. Um, and, uh, more controlled oyster habitat too. Um, we can lay out, these slabs can essentially be like Lego, so theoretically there's infinite configurations of them. We can put a bunch of like interstitial space in the slabs by design to allow for. The looks and pranks for fish, crabs and oysters to grow really successfully. Um, but again, this was the mid-range cost and the construction's a little bit more complex. There's just a. A cost snapshot all on the screen here for you. I'd take, uh, through recycled concrete and. Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Combination, a little over, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we talked, we talked a little bit about performance and variability considerations. Um, the maintenance needs, they're gonna be pretty similar. Maintenance is gonna need to go on with either of them, although, you know. Things do move, so it's possible we get a giant storm that moves rock or concrete and we have to come up and adjust it. Think that it's, it's, uh, much better to go with recycled concrete just because of how we can design. System upliftment rather than just placing, uh, a rock on it essentially. Sustainability benefits, we've already touched on this, but recycled concrete, reduced carbon footprint. The beneficial reuse of materials, you can get carbon credits for that, local, plus effectiveness. Sustainability with. High aesthetic value. Uh, and then. Yeah. It also reduces. Concrete isn't used in the water, which is incredibly wasteful, especially when you have high quality material. That's what we have. So. We'd like to open up for discussion. So we're thinking, what's your preferred design? Should open up the floor, right?
But on the first side, some question screen, back towards, we had the layout.
Yes, sir. All right. So right in here, it looks like you more or less did. Layering with pockets. Yep. So you have the base layer, then you have more of this.
Yep.
Striggers and then.
But that's an intentional design, you'll have water flow and flow.
That's what I was.
And more habitat for.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, trying to figure out when you were talking about the slow rate society. It looked like you designed also for passive flow.
Yeah, so there's, there's five layers. Well, I have stages, I should say. Each stage has at least two layers that are similarly oriented.
Okay.
But each stage is one eighth or ninety.
Yes, okay.
The other stage. And it's also stacked in such a way that between stages, you have openings that goes through.
That, that's what I was looking at to make sure that what I saw was laying now.
And what you're saying is a four foot gap by about a foot, one point, you know. One point two, or one point three, four feet, something like that. So plenty of space for ingress and egress.
You mentioned about them moving in storm. I was gonna ask if you're gonna anchor the layers to each other somehow, or if you're just gonna dry stack them. I'm sorry, do we anchor them? Yeah, if you're gonna like pin them to each other or just let them sort of dry stack or wait?
It's dry stack.
Dry stack, okay.
Wait. These, these panels weigh fourteen tons apiece.
Okay, I was wondering how much that.
That rolls into.
Yeah.
And I remember, I remember how they, um, built. Built, rebuilt, rebuilt again. And did the riprap on that section of the boardwalk. Um, and they did a combination of some stuff coming in by barge, some stuff with stuff on the beach and sort of moved from. Beach to the water, then picked up and moved. Um. Have you gone through the logistics and plans to get? The heavy panels here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have enough to work there.
Okay.
Uh, to accommodate to do. And that's an important point because we want to do this whole thing by the water.
Okay.
Versus doing any land disturbance because that brings in a whole nother, whatever, for requiring.
I know from swimming that section, that ground is soft. So generally like when I would swim out there, my foot would go down six inches in that mud. So probably if you've done any type of test. Some simple bearing capacity. Yes, yeah. And I was actually, when I was surveying, I was walking most of it and I know exactly what you're talking about. It actually lines up exactly. Where you see that the existing jetty kind of sinking out of the water. Now it only suck, it, it sucked a lot, four feet, which is where I get that about, or more, or. Three times the amount of rock between, just to get that base layer. Uh, but like you said, the bearing capacity in that soil compared to riprap, it's not gonna sink as much because you're spreading that load out over the entire flat surface. That's right.
I mean, that's why they tell you to bring your cars down to fifteen PSI on the beach so you have more of a surface area of your tire so you don't sink.
Definitely.
The bearing capacity of this is about an order of magnitude less than the stone.
Nice.
To give you an idea.
Okay. Uh, and then the last one is, I know. At your original presentation, we were talking about possible oyster seeding in there.
Yep.
Where will we, if we move towards that in this, where would that go? Put it on this or we put it in between on it? Yeah, we're gonna certainly put it on it. Um, and that brings, I'm glad you asked that. It's a few other options too. We only are showing the three breakwaters that are going to provide the immediate shoreline protection for the infrastructure. Uh, ideally, we, we want more oyster reefs. Uh, we want big oyster reefs. We need a lot more oysters in the water. So if it's possible, we can expand. That's why I surveyed this entire area. Uh, this is about three acres. Um, so my hope is that we can add in more with different material, well, same material, but different layouts of pods of oyster reefs to pop up here and there. And then I've been in contact with DNR about a lot of this, so the Maryland Artificial Reef Initiative, I met Mike Malpeez actually on. And then I've been in contact with D N R about a lot of this. So the Maryland Artificial Reef Initiative, I met Mike Malpeez actually on Friday. During a reef fall deployment right off the post here. Um, and I've been talking with the S A V crew there. Now, S A V is not commercially available, so it's not an option to just go buy it and plant it. However, D N R, in partnership with some of the academia, do have programs where they supply S A V. I've been in contact with them and as we're putting in oyster reefs, the semi-organic relationship that oysters have with S A V. Means it's, it's producer and consumer and they go hand in hand and they extend that buffer. I like to say that. The oyster reef and S A V combined protect the land, protect the humans against the water and protect the water against the humans. So it's like the perfect buffer and it doesn't disrupt any additional land use. It's kind of just blanked out there right now. And we can add some three-dimensional structure habitat and shoreline protection that benefits literally everybody.
Yeah, it was, uh, that I knew about that from chess packs in seventh grade.
Yep.
Everybody goes there.
Additional design, uh, new sack core with a four reef integrated interior. You can have the wave already laid down.
Like fingers. Yeah. So the Billy Oyster Project, if you're familiar in New York, they haven't built it yet, but they have a bunch of pretty pictures and drawings about it. Um, we should put fingers come off of the structure that, that will look seamless. And that just adds additional surface space for oyster settlement, uh, mussels, clams, and fish hawks. Yeah.
But I think they get to have ponds and, you know, deeper areas and pockets and a lot of purposes, but that's the way we should.
Like I said, with this material, they're like Legas and theoretically infinite layout. We just, it's, how creative can we be?
That's how much. And I say, if we, if we push and do the oyster seeding, I want to find a way to make it a bill by this area or?
It's in a sanctuary already. That's the view.
Okay.
Harry Bay Sanctuary. And we may be able to partner with them and make this part of their, it's a small area compared to what they're going to be doing. They're going to be doing a few hundred acres.
All right.
Could you do three acres and supply spats on top of this? And maybe you can come and make ponds. That's what I'm going to go over.
Yeah, just like we're going to do this. I don't want it to be like going out there. It's like, I'm going to get oysters.
Yeah. Now, one of the challenges is going to be actually setting the oysters on there because it's a high energy environment. It is going to be experiencing some waves. Uh, we have a number of different techniques that we're going to test out to get the oysters to set. And if that doesn't work, I, we do expect good natural spatfall to, to populate eventually. And they should grow up right to the mean low water.
Yeah, one of the, one of the comments said, uh. One of the comments and jumped in here from the review, uh, is the fact that. We're going to be, I don't know if you're seeing this, I'm bursting with just this. Oh, the adaptive management. They, they, they asked, are we considering the adaptive management program being incorporated with any kind of oyster habitat restoration to do? So if we, we build this, we go one approach and we say, hey, we can. Tweet this or add that or we'll use a different technique. They want to see how we could utilize an adaptive management program with, their program was a, uh, metrics to measure against a program or successful oyster reproofing.
Nice. And then all the questions I have.
Hey, well, you know that I love this project. Um. You know, well, we talked about it. Well, one thing, when we talked about earlier, remember when I said I did this on our peers, part of a project, uh. You know, school systems, whatever. But oysters grow. We know that. They get bigger and that's what we want them to do. So how? So will part of the program or management be like, cause what if it does take off and it grows and like, you know, it'll just keep going and going?
Yeah. Orange is pretty near.
Yeah. How does that work? You know, because of course we have low and high tide, whatever. I mean, how? I mean, is there at some point where it will keep growing high like? You know what I mean? Like, like how far and then what do we do? Is there a management for that?
Yeah. No, like I, I understand what you're saying. The upper limit in our region, because like if you go on the coast of North Carolina, South Carolina, Florida even. They have oysters growing up well above mean low water, even mean high water. They'll grow out of water because they can just, they, they shut their shells so tight, hold on to the water, they can breathe for like. Three days at least. I've heard of up to like three weeks. Um, I've tested it, but yeah. The biggest issue here is the freezing air temperatures. When they get exposed to freezing air temperatures, they die within five minutes. They freeze and then die, they don't breathe. So there, that, the, look, the, it's going to be like a statistical, and I'm working with Noah right now to come up with something like a design year storm event. You know, we have a ten-year storm, twenty-five-year storm. It's a probability of what are the odds in given here? Uh, the hundred-year storm is like one in a hundred years. Right? Like we've seen, what, four in the last ten years? But, um, the, the idea is when do we have these blowout tides in January, February, March, when we have freezing air temperatures? That's going to be the limit. And that'll be naturally, that'll be naturally decided upon. And it's not really the end of the world either. If we do have a big die-off on the top of the reef, the reefs, we're going to stick enough below to where they should be able to reset. On top because the shells aren't going to disappear.
Yeah, I mean, they put them in driveways. They're good. They're still going to act as a grate. It's just, I was just kind of curious.
Yeah. And then the next year, there's hope, there's hope that we either have to replant some live oysters to get those live oysters doing all the ecosystem services that we love. And keep, continue growing or ideally we have enough natural spatfalls where it's just not a problem, where we set it and forget it.
There's, there's an appliance that does that. I don't think we're allowed to say that now. Yeah, but that's good. Okay. That's all I have. I mean, I keep asking a lot, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. By the way, the breakwaters will function without oysters on it. Um, but like I said, we're sole conservation district. Our function is to take all of the available resources and focus and coordinate them to meet the needs. The local man user for conservation of soil, water, and other natural resources. And oysters are like, in my mind, the hub of where all of those meet. Uh, so that's just a huge part of this project is the oyster component. Yeah.
It really is. I mean, it, what they've done, it can, some of the bay gardens or the river areas where they planted the reefs, I mean. See for itself.
Yeah, absolutely. And the fishing at the fishing period is never going to be installed as, and then hopefully more. Ultimately, we want to do all thirty-three miles of capital care short form. That is our natural shoreline protection. I think I've shown you guys the amount of. Well, yeah.
I think we have a couple of questions. Um, one observation was thinking about the temperature thing. Um, doesn't have a lot in here. I've, I've been in Hart Beach. Over twenty years and I've seen it twice. Where, uh, Vegas cold enough that actually that area freezes. And so I can, that's another. You know, once every few years, you're going to probably have some that area recome over. But, um.
Yeah. And then the hope is that after we experience one of those events that it recovers and they should, they should recover.
They should. I would, I would think that. Um, okay. My key question to talk a little bit about durability issues between, uh, concrete versus natural stone. Um, can you speak a little bit more about durability of concrete? And we, how long can we expect this to actually last?
That's a good question. Um, we have developed a protocol for the material. It looks at two things. One is the engineering specs for building the material. And the other one is related to how the material could impact or enhance the environmental setting and which. Respect to your question, where do you utilize A S T M standards for building? So we put this material out there. It's going to meet the same spec that. Uh, an engineer using virgin material would have to meet. So we're meeting the same engineering spec with material as the water material.
Yeah, I, I missed, you know, I'm asking that question just because I, I would hate for something out there that, you know, ten years down the road, there is. We're going to be faceless replacing, uh, so.
Um, one, another related aspect to that, when we process, when we process the material. When we demo the material, sometimes we can do it while we're demoing the material. We cut it very specific, precisely, so we don't cause any cracking. Or crevices or rollization, if you will, of the surface. So that's very important because there's edge effects is where the water can get in, freestyle, freestyle, freestyle. So one of the components for our process is to ensure that the surfaces that we, we, we generate for reprocessing. This minimizes any kind of damage. So we, we don't address the long-term durability from that aspect. That we're trying to engineer right, right up to the same A F, A S T M engineering specs to use. The other, the other nice thing I mentioned this before, but most of this material is already then, what we call. Matured in a marine environment. Right. So a lot of the stuff is, or I mean, some of the stuff we pulled off has got gobs of oysters going over already. And we, sometimes we have to strip, unfortunately, we have to strip the oysters off or have it been disrupted. So. But a good question.
Okay.
And, and what we come up with and, and that, that, that is a big thing. That I would say like three years ago, we had this unfortunate incident down in Virginia, the tide water area. Where a contractor said, okay, I, I can build a reef. I got all this demo material and I can build this reef. But what he did, he went out there, he just dumped the material. I mean, with, with no rival reason, didn't do any tests he wanted. And as a result, they encountered hundreds of thousands of dollars to pull that stuff back in. So that really got the industry, you know, a bad rep. So I spent an important amount of time working with C V F, M D P, Fish and Wildlife Service, four of engineers. To ensure that I put this protocol together. That will work and get certified now as the standard for which you use recycled material for.
Um, second question, you alluded to it earlier that, um, in May human timeframe, or she crabs are coming in. And, you know, I, I wasn't on council when this project was first approved. And it's been a question I've had for a long time is just how will or she crabs be affected by this? Um, there is on, been out there. They use sandy beaches on the edge of the community. And yes, they do. When they're trying to come in, they get into that riprap and then they get trapped. Obviously, we want to keep them out of riprap. But we still want them to use the sandy beaches. So, um. Can you speak to the design of how that, how those still be able to maneuver into areas that they can view? Without getting trapped on the rocks?
Yes. Well, we can't do much about them getting trapped in the rocks.
That's right.
I, I.
Yeah.
Now, if we, if we go with the options, uh, either combination or recycled concrete only, they're flat. And we'll be, we'll be, the construction will have them really tight together. So there won't be gaps, like there won't be six inch gaps where they could possibly fall into any stuff sideways. Um, additionally, there's, we intentionally let these, we're trying to mimic a natural reef and natural reefs have channels. And that's what we're trying to mimic here with these gaps between the breakwaters is access, free access. Beyond that, like Mickey was talking about, there are four foot by almost two feet. Holes in the very, on the bottom layer. But this, the way we had it laid out is it's the base layer is just all concrete. And then right above that is kind of staggered concrete where it's not consistent. There is, there is a channel that goes through there to allow for. Or she crabs to either hide there, hang out there. That's what we see too on other breakwater structures. Neil says finished up the day they finished. Putting sand out to one of the riprap structures, the breakwaters, there were horseshoe crabs right hiding right behind it. You can shout them from the way.
Cause that your experience is, I mean, they don't negotiate all of that.
Absolutely.
Where they could be.
Yeah. I think they're like the oldest known animal on the planet or something. They are. Yeah. I don't know how smart individuals are, but they know how to survive that for certain.
Well, they obviously know how to survive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And well, it should be actually an enhancement because like you alluded to, we either expect at least a foot of deposition behind, just because we're slowing the wave energy down. And so sand will come in and it won't have the energy to pull back out. But there may even be more beach for horseshoe crabs too. There could be enhanced. That's the goal. That is the ultimate goal really.
Yeah, the design itself too, once you give them, get above the base layer, the base, base layer is only eight inches thick. Okay. We, we have a series, for each one of those segments, we have a series, I think it's four or five conduits that they can migrate through. At that, 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 at the bottom. We have people, our colleague, we have people online. If, if you don't use that, they have no clue what you're saying. Okay, I'm sorry. You have to have the microphone. Sorry, sorry. Um, well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, as long as this is being designed with that in mind and that's where I just, you know, it's. I don't want to see us add a problem to something that we already put out.
So another point is what we did, project though, on Delaware Bay. Uh, and then with, and that was a standard kind of a breakwater system with rock. We used some concrete. But with, and the horseshoe crabs were a big thing up in Delaware Bay. They're huge. They're. One of the primary impacts of this. And what we found out, well, the, the environmentalists looked at it because they were worried about that impact. What they found out was those channels, okay, you enhance flow through them. Which helps. And there's, there's horseshoe crabs picked up on that.
Yeah.
And they started following the channels.
Gotcha.
Okay, I, that was.
I, I grew up here too, by the way. You weren't here for my previous ones. I grew up here. I love. Yes, I've been here now the night watching the wagon boats and they do overnight lookouts. And it's, it's amazing. I love it. So yeah, that was a big consideration.
I mean, we all stop and think about it. I mean, this is spinning. This is a creature, you know, I'm the dinosaurs. You think we still have them is amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. Most of my questions have been answered, but I think we could probably say with certainty that a whole stone is not going to happen. We're not going to do that. We already have them.
Oh, yeah, that's it. And that's it. It's in one area.
Uh, about how many layers are you talking about?
There'll be nine layers.
Nine layers.
So nine layers, each layer is approximately twenty-eight inch, eight point eight feet. So the nine layers comes up to six feet.
Okay.
So it'd be three and a half feet below me in mortar and two and a half feet.
Well, I just got quite back, back of the envelope. Okay. Um, the only thing I had is oysters themselves, I would add. The, when the oysters come, they will also be part of the breakwater itself. By adjusting for their bodies will actually add to it, which would possibly reduce the erosion of the concrete slabs because there's now a barrier where you get. My question is, do the oysters erode the concrete? It should, no, no.
There you go.
Um, thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for your patience as I'm kind of catching up on this process. I just wanted to confirm, there's no oyster seeding for the stone. Is that right?
We could if that was the option. That was, that was chosen. Um, but that's not the most cost-effective way of building oyster reefs. Um, oyster reefs, I, I discussed this briefly. I'll go real quick. There, there are two main parts. You have the, the core, which is any material that doesn't leach or anything like that. It'd be riprap. Traditionally, it's old dead shells that have compacted and sediments have gotten in there. It's like a solid structure. You can mimic that with concrete reef falls. They got about a million, uh, manufactured. Concrete structures that people are using as reef core now. And then you set oysters on top of that for the about, about a foot of the outer core is the, it's called the lives in the air.
Okay. And the only benefit to the combination you mentioned was really the aesthetics of the stone.
Aesthetics.
Right. And, um, finally, my question is, um, you know, I, I echo my colleague's concern that I don't want to save money now. And have to spend a whole lot of money later because I'm always thinking generationally. So, um, I just wanted to confirm, and I, I've been hearing that stone isn't a popular option, but it is the most durable material. Is that correct?
In the intertidal zone, yes. And if you've noticed on like wood pilings, the most, they get shredded on the intertidal zone. And that's because you have freestyle, you have hot, cold, you have wet, dry. And you kind of experience it with, with your clothing, shoes, anything like that. If you have. If you have it in like a cigar or a humid door and it maintains that, it stays forever. But if you were subjected to changing temperatures, even beer gets scum. Whether that's from light or from, from heat, that's a discussion zone, but. It gets scummed. So the changing conditions are what causes most of it, just like eclipse. The outer edges freeze stall. Um, that's, that's why they're eroding at about a foot per year. Uh, because that outer layer freezes and then thaws and then just kind of slumps away. And if you look at piling, like wood pilings, you're experiencing the same thing. That intertidal zone is where it's most decayed below the water. And Venice is set on logs that have been there for hundreds of years. When it's in that environment exclusively. When it's in that environment exclusively and doesn't experience all the different variability, it tends to last longer. So concrete below the water shouldn't be an issue at all, above may, just like our sidewalks.
Another quick question I have. Steady difference is there between that and and concrete?
So. Hard to express, I wish we had a picture, me and this slide, I should have gotten a picture. But imagine like a, like a concrete road bed, that's what's going to be sticking out of the water. It can have algae on it, or it can match the existing rip rap, that's. Yeah, an eight by, an eight by sixteen slab of concrete. And it's just that, that's what it's gonna look like. Personally, living around here and loving the town, I would like to see the rock on top. Which could sort of matches the existing.
Yeah, me and Evan, I don't know, where I was speaking is the aesthetic part of this and it's being where it's at. And you've got people that are, you know, people want to have more of a quality time. That's the, that's going to give you a view.
Yep, so. In irregularity where the waves are hitting is kind of beneficial. Um, if you have a seawall, it's just concrete, reflects really like that. But with a rip rap, it kind of breaks it up, puddles it in different ways, channelizes, spreads it out, a little bit different than. Per inch concrete slab, well, both serve purposes that are suited that we need for this project, but. Margin of difference.
Um, see if, um, Councilman Dotson answered my question.
Hello, thanks for your presentation. I, I think the council members have asked the majority of the question, and actually, Michelle, you nailed down on what I was gonna ask them about, so. Unless I missed it when I would just, as I was getting on, uh, which side of the here is this gonna be on?
The north side for about two hundred and ten millimeter. As those, actually, you can see on this, on this slide here, these are the existing jetties that have sunk. This one is at the beach here, that's when the horse shoe crabs hang out, this would be the, the. Between seven street and Atlantic.
Yes, Hatch's corner to, um, seven street, Greg.
Yep, yep, got it, okay. Uh, let's see. I think I'm good, I think I've heard everything I needed to hear, uh, yes, yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one other important that I just brought up is the mitigation component. Uh, anytime you're putting fill into the water, which taking a breakwater structure that's built. Then some mitigation is required, that's where our hope is that the oyster reefs will be that component of the mitigation. Um, along with S A P. And we're calling timeframe for when, once these are constructed, we're looking at the next year. Uh, that way that has time to deposit the sediments to allow the foundation for the S A P beds. Combined, it should be very successful.
All right, so just so we're clear, so, uh, you know, this is, you know, we presented some information earlier in the year. The slab opportunity came up, the tragedy took place on the bridge, which we can reuse it, it can be done. That's the slab that are, and then are we looking, are we, are, do we need to decide if we want to put the rip rap some on top of it? Or leave it as slab? And then do we decide about the oysters also, because to me, the oyster part is a no brainer. Uh, it's gonna clean up the bay, it's gonna bring, it's gonna continue to grow with the high tides, and will continue to protect the existing concrete, so to me. The schools are involved, people are involved, and I think is the win win there. What, what do you need from us? What do you want from us?
Really decide what you guys want to accomplish, what you want coming out the water that's gonna be visible. So me and the water and above, do you want that to be recycled concrete slabs? Or do you want that to be?
Is there any way you can get us photos? Something to show the difference between what the slab is gonna look like versus the slab with, with. And we all see rip rap, we, we had it sinking out there. Where actually put rip rap on a slab breakwater. But we can give you pictures.
Just try, you know what the rip rap looks like, we'll give you one of the, of the concrete.
Yeah, just something that council can see, see the interviews all. If we could do that, that would, I think, be very helpful.
Okay.
I, I, I would believe that everybody include, you know, Councilman Dotson on there, it, it makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, we have a sewer line that we're protecting, we have the boardwalk we're protecting, we have the houses, I mean, it's, it really is needed.
Yeah.
I appreciate your hard work and we're very excited about it, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it's probably more important for council to see a photo with the concrete.
Yeah.
Full photo of the whole concrete out of the water.
Yeah, if you give us a great photo that way of that, then they can see, get it to, get it to staff, and then I get, we can get it to council, that would be great.
Yes, we'll have that to you first thing tomorrow, and then whenever you guys make a decision on what you prefer. We'll go ahead and move forward with a, a full, a, a stamp of your design with specifications, protocols and everything required. And down to the details.
Right.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
A set of ways, when I'm looking at picture there, it looks like. Uh, nine layers.
Well, then he can't, he can't use that if.
Yeah, roughly, like roughly four feet, uh, steps.
Email to me in the morning.
At the top, you're looking at eight feet wide, which is just one slab, we're making two stack on top of each other. And then I didn't measure how long of. Forty, forty, I'm just trying to figure out, what is the, what is the rise, what is the belt? Yeah, so about a foot, a little under a foot, because there are eight inch thick slabs stacked too high.
I mean, I need, I'm busting, is it, is it, there's a grant that I can talk to Jason about it.
Stacy's actually trying to set up a site meeting with.
D N R to come out and take, there is a grant that's, that's open, yes, we are seeking, we are seeking some grant funding, yes, we are. Jason and I talked about that earlier, so we're gonna regroup and yes, there is.
I figured.
Oysters is kind of like picking out a baggage and they have stations. They're all good, which one more, that's, that's the question, there's plenty of options.
Field trip to, you know, the States where they did their rip rap. And we were waiting to see how it held up, but, um, they got a pretty good grant.
Yep, we might have a picture. All right, and you have a question. We may have a picture we can show you guys right now. He's working.
Not right now.
Yeah, just give it to us. Just give it to us.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll definitely get your vision, we might have one, and the other person, I have another presentation, I can't, I might add a. Picture of.
If you can find it before the days, I mean, before we're done, but we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, just get it to us.
Okay.
His birthday.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Make sure, um, Cosman Dotson's is unmuted.
He could, he can unmute himself.
Okay, Kenny, I wasn't sure you had to prove it.
There you go.
Thank you, I'm good.
All right, well, we had a snap through earlier, um, in our enthusiastic momentum of swearing in, Michelle. We did, she did vote in the position, uh, but that was an executive section and, um, I was not. We kind of spent, guess what, you gotta throw dollars again. Right, so here we go.
All right, Mayor. I think we need to go through the motion process, right, that first.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to read right now.
Okay.
I'm doing it right now, so, shh, everybody, here we go. May I have a motion to elect Michelle Cross and fill the vacancy on the North Beach Town Council, creating with Mr. Troncon's designation? The meeting, the appointment would be for the unexpired term of Mr. Troncon's term.
So moved.
The motion, we have second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An aye or q.
Thank you so much, so we apologize, we are very excited, so. We are not leaving, so let's try it again.
I did the whole part again. You gotta re swear, you gotta re swear.
Do you? Here we go, the good news, we don't have to do the photo again.
You have to re swear.
And I'll go really slow. I say your name. Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the constitution.
And support the constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill to judgment.
And to the best of my skill and judgment.
Delightfully faithfully.
Faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of North Beach Town Council.
Execute the office of North Beach Town Council.
According to the constitution.
According to the constitution.
Congratulations again.
Excuse me, Linda and Stacy, can you please turn your mic off?
Your mic's on.
Please, I, I can hear you guys over the meeting.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
It was, it was off.
I can, yeah, I can hear you guys talking.
All right, sorry about that, all right, let's move on to the final item on the agenda. And this is a presentation and discussion that we want to throw out there. As everybody knows, we have the planning commission, we have the appeal board, we have the tree committee, we have the flood committee. And we have the environmental committee. Um, due to many reasons, the environment, environmental committee has really have not been active for a while. Nobody's fault, just what happens with committees. So staff sat down with Councilman Kramer recently, as he was involved with the environmental committee with some ideas. What we could do to get it going again. Just so you know, the tree committee is a standalone. The flood committee is a standalone, but what we're gonna do is we have an idea that we, that, um, let it talk about Stacy, Alan. Uh, recreating the environmental committee, change the name. And we're going to make it a part of the umbrella of this, the tree committee, the, um. The flood committee, this way there's better communication, there's cross communication, cross involvement. And this way, every committee that really is all about environment, if you think about it. They'll be able to communicate easier and more efficient, and I can turn it over to Linda, Stacy or Alan, if they want to add anything.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Linda Salatown Administrator, so the mayor pretty much covered it, but. You know, advisory committees are the key for us to engage with our residents, build transparency and bring expertise and guide expert decisions. In an open and transparent environment. The flood committee has been a very, very strong model of success, but as the mayor mentioned, what we would like to do. Is for the council to consider the North Beach Constitution and Sustainability Committee. And that would be an umbrella committee where the tree, the tree committee would stand alone, the flood committee would stand alone. Um, it would help us meet our sustainability requirements for the Maryland Sustainable City. And, um. The council would appoint. Seven to nine members and then. We would continue to do what we do, we get representation from residents, environmental professionals, business owners, educators, and sometimes even the youth. We'd have a staff liaison for each of those committees, they would be publicly, publicly held either on Zoom or in person and then. Writing reports, uh, quarterly reports to the Maryland Town Council and of course, they're during, for our mo, open meetings, all the minutes would be posted. So what we're really here to talk about is to see if the council is interested in moving forward with an umbrella. Organization to that effect, and if you are, we'd like to bring back recommendations on how to make these committees a little stronger for you. That's it in action.
This one minor administrative note, the, the mayor appoints will just approve.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so, this is. I was on the environmental committee for. And. The environmental committee was largely responsible for like recycling program, we get, we had a lot to do with the wooden shore. Most everything environmental that came through this town, when Maryland B O T came out and raised the. Two sixty one, the environmental reports and everything come out of that, we reviewed. So there was a time where there was a lot of things going on and, and you were very active at that point in time. And, um. Over the years, the members of the committee have either moved away or decided that they were, you know. They were done. Um, didn't really agree with the kind of direction that committee were going at the time. So it left, it basically just left me as the sole lead person on the environmental committee, and so. Um. When I, it was going on council, we had, the mayor and I had talked about this, um, and. I had given this a lot of thought in terms of how we could resurrect committee, the environmental committee specifically, and, um. And the idea came to me, we have a lot of, we. We have issues with volunteers and keeping volunteers on committees, um, certain committees, like the flight committee. There's a lot of dedicated people that are interested in, in what they're doing, and so they have maintained that committee and. The personality of it over the years and. Um, and that's kind of really where we want to get with, um, the environmental committee. The tree committee is kind of disbanded a little bit, but we need to have the tree committee for, um, Free City USA. Um, and they, they're right, but it is, um. By charter, it's supposed to be, the tree committee is supposed to be around. Um. And then we have the brave team, which is only something that, uh, is every four years when we use the same. We formed a green team when we first did that eight years ago. Um, and that. That team. Uh, came together for one purpose and then kind of, you know, disbanded for a few years and then come together again. And so. And, and my way of thinking here to kind of bring everything together again and, and get these committees back off the ground. Um, and, and sustainable on a more regular basis is. My thinking was is that we brought, um. The committees together. Um. Under one umbrella, you know, and then we, we really worked on a program or. E R thing to get volunteers that are interested in these certain areas. Whether it be environmental, whether it be tree, whether it be. Uh, working on a green team because the green team needs to have certain expertise. Uh, and then, of course, we have the flight committee that has a certain expertise, so. It was, it was my way of thinking is, is that we could, we could bring everything together under a single. Um, body. And as, as the mayor said, I think there would be some efficiencies and, and better communication, cross communication between. Um, the different committees and what they're doing and. Uh, and then, of course, there's always the opportunity to. You know, you got a project going on, like this, this breakwater project out here, or. The conference of plans is coming up, kind of covers different territory. Um, you know, the committees can get together and be together. Um, to guys go through some of this stuff, so. Um, that was my way of thinking when I, when, when we talked about this, I said, now Linda and Stacy. Uh, to kind of go through what my thoughts were, um, the. The memo that you all have in front of you now. Uh. Is product of that, that meeting and, uh, so. Just kind of interested in hearing what everybody, uh, thoughts and, and whether this is something that we want to pursue. I'm just trying to get these committees back up and running.
And again, yeah, you have the memo, war docs. Take a look at it, if, if you don't have any input tonight, you can always circle back around and get with. Councilman Kramer, get with Stacy. And our goal is to stand up something that's going to last. And I just think the cross communication, tree committee is going to be tree committee, flood committee is going to be flood committee. And then this committee will have its standard, it will have its members too. So you know, it's 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 not the easiest to keep volunteers volunteering. Um, and this is one way we can accomplish our goals, but please share your input or reach out later. Any, Councilman Dotson, you're on TV, so you yeah, we can put anybody, again, just reach out to Councilman Kramer and Stacy after the meeting during this week. If you don't have anything tonight.
I'm just trying to understand what this, what what this is. We have the treatment.
Yes.
The flood committee, and that this is the reconstituted environmental.
Yes, it is.
It's not that, I was just wondering, with the tree committee and the flood committee members of the it's a commission, I definitely separate that and I'd be.
Yeah, I mean, my original thinking was a a an umbrella commission, but I, that can't happen by charter. So what we're talking about is a uh, the much um, it's a, it's a committee, the North Beach Conservation and Sustainability Commission, or
Okay.
Um, the idea is that it is, you know, changing the name to encompass everything that really happens within the town from an environmental perspective. And that includes the, you know, flooding. We did a lot of things with flooding on the environmental committee. Um, the tree committee is is a natural base to it. Um, and and of course, the green team, there's pieces and components of it that are environmental. So it's in a way, it's reconstituting the environmental committee, but it's bringing all the 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 organizations that we have in town under a single uh, committee. And share, and share a same, that share a similar goal.
The goals get rid of
So are you saying that this is going to be, the those committees are going to be like subcommittees? To the, to the N B C S E? Does it sound, that's what it sounds like?
Yes, so we expect you have this large committee, you you have a overarching committee and that you would have the committees remain somewhat independent. And they would be subcommittees of this one larger committee.
Uh, I have a concern with that because they're they're supposed to be individually and separate for a reason. And I don't think the N B C S E should be hovering over them because if they need to get something done or to us, are you saying they got to go through this sustainability committee? Before they push up to us? I don't think we need more top cover. I think what we need is this. I I'm not even sure if we need the I I I mean, I I and I appreciate what you're trying to do and and improving this, but maybe we just need to put a little more effort in trying to recruit more people to get involved. And one of the things that has always kind of been a thorn in my side is some of these committees meeting in the middle of the day. And that right there eliminates a ton of people from volunteering and getting involved. And I think you'll get a lot more participation if if they were required to meet in the evenings. Like, we're having this council meeting now. Of course, a lot of people don't come to the council meeting, but that's a whole nother story. But um, I'm gonna think about this for a minute. But I guess, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the the effort and and what you're trying to do, but I I don't want to put something else above those committees uh, that they got to work their way through. Uh, I don't think that's how the overall function of these committees are supposed to work. We are that, we are that top cover. We're the people that they go through, not another committee above them. But anyway, I'm open for more discussion on it. We can, we can talk about it more, but that's just the first thing coming off the top of my head right now.
Good input. Absolutely good input.
Thank you, Chris. And I'm thinking a little differently, this is why I was using the words I were using. It runs between committee and commission. We have to buy by our, by our charter, we have to have the tree commit. Nothing prevents those members to be part of another, be part of a larger commission. They still act as they're supposed to, as the tree, as the tree. Only those people will be treated. Same thing with the flood people. They are, they're leading members and commissioners. And then there'll be these others in between or just purely what was, what had, what had been the, the old environment. And all they would be doing is what the commission would be, all the things that you're talking about here. Under it. That's how I envision it, is then you do have a, I mean, the two committees can meet, do whatever they want to do. I mean, they they have their own charter, they have their own business, they can meet them, meet by themselves. But if you, if you want to do the, the, you know, preventing the silos, they would also be part of the commission, that they would meet all together. And bring, bring those sorts of things. That's how I was, when you're talking about this, how I envision it, without making them the subcommittees, not subcommittee. They're just members of du- dueling things, a committee and the commission. And that's what I think we, probably the direction that we should go. If that would be have more men, you'd have more members because they would be worried and the flood people and and the tree people were working together in certain issues. And then there'll be sort of the third group who just generally what what is laid out here for what the previous environmental committee. But that's how I see.
Again, more good input. That's the goal for tonight, is just throw it out there. And then further information to us, we'll address it and let's figure out what's the best way to move forward. Because right now, we don't, we don't have that committee. So we definitely want to do that. Alright, what else? Any other input or maybe pretty much? Alright. Sounds good. I appreciate everybody's input. That was good information. Let's have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you guys. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Welcome, Councilman Crosby.
Hi, Greg.